I'm going to call the Town of Old Saverbrook zoning commission. Regular meeting to order Monday, March 3rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Town hall first floor conference room at 302 Main Street, Old Saver. Role call this evening is myself, Mark Calderella Chair, Jerry Lewis Vice Chair, regular members Bob Creedman, Laura Gray and John Henry. And we have one alternate online Brenda Dyson. We also have our CEO Officer Chris Costa and our clerk Julie. And we have three of them.
We just have Brian.
Just one, this one.
Just panels.
Panels, I see. Nobody online and we have two, four, six, eight, 10, 12 in the audience.
Do you have Brenda online?
And Brenda's online, correct.
Yeah.
Regular business minutes from our last meeting of Monday, February 3rd, 2025. Make a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry Lewis, are there any comments, corrections?
She must have had.
Not hearing any, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstains passes 500. No correspondence other than what we have for applications this evening. Moving on to our public hearing eight. Was that how you said that? Real veto, application to amend the old Saverbrook zoning map. For the record, I'll be just in thirty minutes. Lucinda Webb, 15 Monk Road from AA dash one B two to B three. Send our web Monk Road from AA dash one B two to all AA dash one Royal Home LLC. Seven fifteen Middlesex Turnpike from AA dash one B two to B three. Barbara Reardon, seven thirty one Middlesex Turnpike from B two to B three. And Business B four to Business B four Barbara Reardon at seven eleven Middlesex Turnpike. Adventure LLC at seven thirty two Middlesex Turnpike Irving T Wong Wong at three seventeen Essex Road. BFW US Incorporated at three fifteen Essex Road Barbara Audio at six eighty eight and seven hundred Middlesex Turnpike. Landry Associates at six eighty Middlesex Turnpike. Lab Realty LLC seven fifty six Middlesex Turnpike. Lab Realty LLC two eighty eight Essex Road and two ninety four Essex Road. Lab Realty LLC Essex Road. Seven hundred and fifty six Associates Essex Road. Our applicant and our agent for this evening is Edward M. Casella. And our actions, the public hearing continue or close by March seventeenth or no later than April sixth. Mr. Casella.
Okay, good evening Edward Casella representing Anthony Rito, Rito Properties LLC. Who's the applicant for this for this matter? This is an application to ask the zoning commission to undertake zone changes for the properties that are on Middlesex Turnpike basically north of Route nine. I can share my screen and give a little illustration of what we're doing here. Okay, so the zoning commission is pretty familiar with this background, but I'll just run through it for the record and for the folks that are in attendance. So the current zoning of this area, Middlesex Turnpike in the intersection of Route nine is basically along Middlesex Turnpike. They're commercially zoned properties right adjacent to the interchange on the south is where the Yale property is. And on the eastern side of the road is where DRT parcel begins. Those are two B two properties. And then when we get to the north, which is the area that we're focusing on today, you can see there's island of properties on Essex Road that are B two zone. There's an island of properties in between Essex Road, BFW Highway and Middlesex Turnpike that are B two zone. And then the first few properties are also B two zone on both the east and west. If we look at the map more, you would see there was B three going up as we get closer to Essex. So what we're here today is trying to rezone basically these B two properties that are north of Route nine. And part of the reason we're doing this is because B two zoning isn't really appropriate, in my opinion, and I think in yours based upon some of our discussions for this location. Under the zoning regulations and the purpose of B two zone, the purpose of it is to sustain and enhance central shopping areas consisting of anchor retail shopping with small attached complimentary stores and parking. So it's B two is really geared toward, you know, the Saverbrook Shopping Center and parcels along Route one that are located within kind of a central corridor of Old Saverbrook. Where where we want to encourage larger scale shopping. This zoning has been in place for many years. Part of the evidence that it might not, doesn't actually fit is a lot of these properties aren't developed commercially. They're zoned commercial, but they aren't developed commercial and they certainly aren't developed in a manner that's consistent with central shopping areas, right? So the zoning regulations have another zone, similar commercial. That's the B four gateway business district, which is what we're seeking to have some of these properties rezoned as. And some of them rezoned as the B three zoning district, which allows for a combination of both residential and commercial. So again, the gate, the V four district is a gateway. So it's meant to be kind of in areas that are gateways into town. It is appropriate for uses that need easy access to highways, which we have here. So when we look at what's being proposed, again, properties on the west of one fifty four and then the properties on the east of one fifty four. What what we're doing is the triangle property on the corner, the Reardon property is being changed to B four. The rest of the properties to the north of that near closest to Monk Road are actually being rezoned from V two commercial to B three commercial. And and one of the benefits of that is both those properties have, or two of those properties have residences on them currently. So they're not conforming because residential is not allowed in the B two zone. It is allowed in the B three zone, so those properties will achieve conformity. There's a sliver here where this larger parcel is currently the zone B two. But that will be rezoned to AA one. So that whole property will be AA one. One of the other benefits on the western side of the street here, the properties will have a singular zone. So there aren't going to be split zones. So this is, the top one is, I think Lucinda Webb's property. Map sixty two lot twenty three. And this is going from split zone AA one and B two. And this is going to be all AA one. The next property down is Reardon property, formerly Reardon property, seven fifteen Middlesex Turnpike. And that is going from split AA one and B two to B three. And same thing with the next property down. Seven thirty one Middlesex Turnpike, seven fifteen and seven thirty one. I think I mixed up seven fifteen is the southern one, but those are both going from split.
And I think one's Lucinda Webb, there are two Lucinda Webb properties.
It, okay, yeah, this one.
Yeah.
This is Lucinda Webb.
Yes.
No, this is fifteen Monk, the large one is fifteen Monk. And then the smaller one, I'm corrected here, is just Monk Road. So then the, then the two, then the Reardon property is going from B two and AA one to B three. And then the seven eleven Middlesex Turnpike is going to B four. So all those properties will have a single unified zone. On the east side, we took exactly what's B two and made it all B four. So that's obviously much similar. There's restaurants over there, B and L constructions over there, the BFW is over there. And there's a few vacant parcels in those islands. That is essentially what's happening. We went to the planning commission, received a positive approval recommendation from the planning commission on this. I know that River Cog also chimed in with a more or less neutral referral. This is mostly going from commercial zoning to commercial zoning, just changing the type of commercial zoning from mostly B two to B four and then some from B two to B three.
And harbor management also acknowledged receipt with no comment.
Yeah.
And you do have a letter from Barbara Reardon's attorney supporting.
Do you have a copy of that? I do, if I want to have a copy of that, yes, thank you.
Do you have more to present?
I don't at this time.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
You've pointed out that the B three rezoned parcels would still allow for residential use. Correct?
Yes.
And you also balanced the AA one conversion to B three with preventing the split parcels involved up there.
On the west side, yes.
That was a residual effect of zoning by a distance from a road rather than by the shape of a lot. And and that's a, that certainly appears to be a good thing. The changes from B two to B four don't impact the residential potential development under the current regulation. So that's a wash. But from this commissioner's perspective, it's important that the map changes should not decrease potential residential uses in any way. And in this case, the residential uses that are potentially allowed are not decreased. That's a good thing. You mentioned that there would be some change, proposed change, if adopted, would do away with some non-conformities. Are there any existing conditions which would become non-conforming?
No, not to my, not to my knowledge. Restaurants allowed in B two, B four. The BFW. I think that's allowed in B two.
Allowed in B four.
Yeah, and then there's two residential properties over there on the east side, which are non-conforming to both equally.
All right. I don't have anything else.
There's no tax change proposal here.
No tax change, this is straight map.
Okay, along with the information that was in the packet. It was about, I'm not sure. Just get different players, just copy a very, so it doesn't change anything.
Just helps with definitions.
Definitions.
Yeah. Very helpful.
Anyone else? Brenda, did you have any questions?
Thank you.
Casey, I'm looking for the, is she there?
I think she's on, yeah, she's there.
I'm there. Um, I, I guess I do have one question here. Wait, let me make it so you can see me. Okay, hi. Um, I, I'm just trying to understand sort of, I, I understand that the sort of impetus for this is based on a specific, you know, property and a specific proposed development or potential development. And I, I understand that the planning commission determined that this was consistent with our plan of conservation and development. I'm just trying to, and I don't necessarily object per se. But I think as the zoning commission, I'm just wondering. I, I think we should be conscious that we're making a specific, we're making a decision to go in a specific direction for this area by doing this. And I think that if that's what we think is appropriate for this area and that's how we want to see it developed as a heavy, sort of a heavier commercial area, then that's, that's fine. But I think that that needs to be sort of a conscious decision that we're making as the zoning commission and not something that we're doing just because we, you know, one property developer wants to develop their property a certain way. So I guess that's just my comment on it.
Thank you.
Chris, well, in terms of where, where is the, which section has the loop for? Not necessarily sidewalk stuff, but there's, there are little diagrams in the section.
Sixty eight.
Sixty eight, thanks.
It's a big section.
We've heard pattern in buildings. Oh, I looked there. There's, in one of our sections of the regulations, there are little maps on each page that show that are particularly attractive for biking and walking. And there is a regulation regarding. I don't see sixty eight, that's why I couldn't find it. It's in the townwide standards, where is that?
I'll find it.
Okay, look.
Do you have a specific concern? Did you have a specific concern?
I just wanted to check to see the impact of making the zone changes on those little maps that shows us the loop. That's one aspect. The other is that for those who own the lots there, if there is a change, does it impact what's expected? Do they have new expectations? Because even if they're just aware, now aware of them.
I think I found it, sixty two point two.
Oh, the sidewalk loops, next time I find it, I'll ask it.
Sixty two, it's in Cartage.
Sixty two. Sixty two point two.
Yeah, that is, yeah, there it is, sixty two point two.
Yeah.
It has to do with sidewalks. Sidewalks will be installed along state or local feeder streets or commercial thoroughfares as identified in the plan of conservation and development where it supplements, preferably in areas south of I ninety five. However, on the, that's for location. Number three is around the, that's, that's the loop by the causeway. The, where's the other one? The Boston Post Road corridor.
That's the ferry's point.
There are three maps on the page. The one on the left contains a loop that goes to this area of town.
It's the ferry point loop.
The ferry, ferry point loop, yes. And the ferry point loop, the only way to get to ferry point is either by the Route one extension on the south side of I ninety five or you come out from the ferry row area on this Essex Road piece over here.
Right.
And the BFW Highway. And so those roads, well, BFW Highway anyway, is definitely included in the loop which deals with sidewalks. So I guess it's a heads up that if you didn't know it before, now you'll know that there's a regulation that says that if these properties are developed, that sidewalks will be expected.
Yep.
That's not a change, that's just already there.
This being a public hearing. Can I just respond to, I think it was Casey's comment regarding, you know, I think it's important to understand that what's happening closest to Monk Road is actually being downgraded from a higher level commercial B two to B three, which allows, requires smaller buildings, you know, less coverage, less impervious.
Residential.
It allows residential. So I think a big chunk of this, probably a third, is actually being downgraded. And then whether or not going from B two to B four, B four is more restrictive. B four as a, as a larger front yard setback, for example. So there are, you know, there are regulatory pros and cons to both. So I'm not going to say one is by far, but we know B three is less commercial than existing B two. So I think especially on the western side, closest to the Monk Road residences, this is, you're getting a lighter zoning, you're getting a less, less commercial zoning. So I think I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, thank you. This being a public hearing, open it up for anyone in the audience that is interested in speaking on behalf of or in opposition to the applicant. This, you, you had your hand up earlier, so now do you put, if you identify yourself, please?
I'm Ian Reardon, I'm the daughter of Barbara Reardon. The, I just want to say this as a point of information because I don't know, just, I think people might be interested. The property at seven fifteen Middlesex Turnpike. It, it has a spring, I don't know the legal term.
It's wetlands?
Wetlands, right in the smack middle of it. So it cannot ever be developed as a commercial property. So the corner property that's adjacent to that seven eleven, I believe, Middlesex, which is on the corner of Route nine, that is potentially commercial. But the property that you, I don't know if you could bring up that map again.
Sure.
Just so people will know. So that, that property, it can't be.
Seven fifteen is this large one here, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And I think there's a house up on the hill somewhere. Or in this area, right? And this, this is the corner property I think you were talking about.
Yes, that can be.
Closest to the Route nine on ramp.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. In the back, has your hand up first?
Yes.
Yes, could you identify yourself?
Kay Hack, and I'm a resident and I abut some of these petitioned properties.
Could you spell your last name for us, please?
Yes, K A A K.
Thank you.
All right, and I am concerned not only for quality of life, but the residents were already there. And mind you, this was, I was explaining to Mr. Rito the history of when one fifty four used to be the Route nine, the transit from north to south, you know, to the shore from the Hartford area. The little choppy bits of variations in zoning existed, you know, to service restaurants and gas stations and so forth, but the, the travelers. But at that time, it was more a seasonal burst of traffic going north. It was before the era of Route nine, the expressway being built and commuter buses and so forth being installed. But we do not have the infrastructure, there is no city water. And we all, none of us have city sewage, but for any exploitative growth in that area, there's not any natural gas or city water. And the water supply is limited and, and must be protected. And I look at, at those things besides the wetlands. At my own property, we have a verbal pool, which is a protected area. It's a seasonal pond. But I've just raised those questions about quality of life and the supplies going forward of water and services in general. You know that, that any change, the character of, of the town as they were alluding to in the ultimate statements. Is this what you really want to do to push forward and push all of that in a solid block? I understand one person has a business need and he would like to change his zone, but for the whole thing to be changed, to be used in a more exploitative, my word, not anybody else's, use of that land and the drainage, the, the septic issues that will come with it. I just am really concerned for the future, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr.?
Yes, and I can provide a written.
Can I have your name, please?
Thank you, yes. First name Charles Landry, L A N D R E Y.
Thank you.
And I am here on behalf of Landry Associates, whose property is at six eighty Middlesex Turnpike. That property includes a office building and also includes the Parker House, which we have a picture of right here. We're concerned that the proposed changes will result in increased noise, dust and dangerous traffic involving commercial vehicles. This is already a dangerous intersection where there's the Route nine on ramp. Cars are often speeding to the right of cars, wanting to turn left onto Route nine. It's so bad that when we hire new people, we caution them about that intersection and suggest they turn left out of our parking lot and go around because it can get so hairy, especially around five o'clock when everyone's trying to get home fast. Coming from the direction of Essex, cars are often traveling at excessive speeds on the curve that starts around the current La Norella restaurants. To have additional commercial trucks and equipment coming out along this stretch of road is simply dangerous. I'm especially concerned about that triangular parcel, which is being proposed to change to B four, which is at the, has the Route nine on ramp on one side of it and one fifty four on the other. To have slow moving vehicles coming out of that area is just a disaster waiting to happen. Our building currently is occupied by a company with fifteen employees who often spend their breaks and lunch outside on the property's deck and in the pollinator display gardens around the Parker House. And we feel that these proposed map changes will result in increased noise and dust, reducing the quality of life for those employees and for those other people living and working in nearby residential and commercial properties. Because of the reasons listed, we are opposed to these map changes. Thank you for your attention.
Do you, do you have a letter that you want to issue?
Thank you, yes.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Donna Houd, it's H O U D E. And I'm at two sixty two Essex Road, right off of the exit two ramp. And BFW Highway. There's, there's four parcels there that are, you're going to have rezoned or are trying to have rezoned. But if there is no purpose for it right now, why change it? That was one of my questions. Second, secondly, I'd like to say I'm concerned about the wildlife. We have turkeys, wild turkeys that are nesting in that property. I've seen them, they come to my property. We have the deer. we have the deer, we have the skunks, we have, a neighbor might even reported a black bear, so that was concerning, that these animals have no place to go, but I'm also concerning about those parcels, because, forgive me if I have it wrong, but if those are going to be gateway parcels, which could be leased out to other individuals, we could have a cannabis store in there, we have, this is a neighborhood of children, and the speed, obviously, is another factor, but music, restaurants, live entertainment, that will affect the quality of life for the people who live there, and have for many, many years. So I will say the speed really frightens me, I have to cross the street to get my mail, and it's like being in a video game, they actually speed up when they see me, and I have a bad knee in the back of my hip, so I'm concerned about the traffic and the noise and the dust, like this gentleman mentioned. It's great to have progress, but there's plenty of areas on Main Street and on the Post Road that are empty, vacant, and maybe can be developed, but this is so close to residents' property, i-it's just right now very bad when the summer people are in town and the boats are going out for lunch, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, everyone, Adam Seagill from right here in town.
Can you spell your last name?
No, C is in Charlie, C is in zebra, E, P is in Paul, I, E, L. And I've been sitting here listening to all of this, and one of the things that everyone forgot, this town is heavily into, quote, wetlands, and all of these areas that you're discussing, the end of Monk Road over, that's all wetlands, streets, brooks, frogs, et cetera, and the monk pond, or Cranberry Pond, as it's known on the town maps, that's all wetlands, and it said, and it said before, these springs, and these maps are fine and good, but I have not heard one peep out of anybody tonight about wetland protection, and this town is heavily into that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yeah, Bill Webb. The property was zone B2 when Route 9 came through, and before that, I'm not sure what it was, but that's why it's B2. We are comfortable, I'm the son of Lucinda Webb, my sister Kate has discussed this with the applicants and with Chris, and we are for not being B2 anymore, and we think B3 is appropriate, so we'll be conforming again, we have a beaver pond, we are wetlands, we're never going to become commercial, but B3 works for us. I, with respect to the other comments being made, I think we, we are not going to comment either for nor against, we remember that this used to be Middlesex Turnpike and had a golf station.
Yep.
And a disco, and was much more active in the past, but since then, it's become a quiet place. I, I would just point out that our pond is the headwaters for Turtle Creek, which passes under Route 9 from the Boca roadside into our pond, through the wetlands that are still, I think, owned by the Riordan family, and then snakes through, I think, Alan Hall's property. And then becomes the Otter Cove ponds and runs out to Turtle Creek. And so I'm just pointing that out, but I'm also here to say that we support our property going to A3. It is residential, I don't want to make us conforming.
Okay. Anyone else? Ed, would you have comments?
Sure. Yeah, I just, I have a few responses, I think we've already talked about the, the reason why the specific properties are being rezoned, why we believe there's a benefit to it, and I know a lot of the questions were concerning ultimate development of the properties, which is a phase two, that's not in front of the commission today, but the, there will be a thorough review at the appropriate points of time regarding this in from wetlands for any potential development, location of driveways, what are the proposed uses, and how will those proposed uses impact neighbors, but I think from the zoning commission's perspective, we're, we're, we're accomplishing a lot with this application, as you know, 16 properties on the zone changes is a broad stroke, but I think if you look at, if you look at it, either in its entirety or the, the individual parts, this is beneficial. It's already heavily commercial zoned, it's going to a different commercial zone, then we're, we are bringing some properties into conformity by bringing them into the B3 zone, so that's why we're asking you to approve the application.
Thank you.
I have one more question, Donna Houd. I know the gentleman wants to develop a piece of the, one of the parcels, which is fine, and, but, he, and, and you, you said moving from B2 to B3, and that's fine for conformity, but the other parcels, I'm still not understanding why changing them, unless you're planning to redevelop and sell it down the road, could be 10 or 15 years, like I mentioned before, but, and I am very concerned about the litter as well, I mean, I live right off exit 2, and I'm out there picking up jars full of urine, I'm not kidding, and no one seems to ever pick it up, so I just wanted to add that, some development is great, but we have a really quaint town here, that's why people come to vacation here, and people do work here, but a lot of people live here, and I just wanted to say that lastly, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Anthony Carlo, I.
Please spell your last name.
Carlo, C-A-R-L-O. I live off of Trolley Crossing, and so I received a notice in the mail here. You know, I mean, obviously, I'm concerned about commercial development that happened down in the area, it's really close to my street, my neighborhood, there are kids on that neighborhood, you know, not to mention the traffic and all the issues that have been raised against it, I'm not supportive of it, I understand that, you know, it may be initially an application for a particular parcel, but the concern is, is the potential for future development and, and on the larger scale, and obviously, that's, this is probably the first step in the process of a plan, as a citizen of the town for, I don't know, six years now, and actually, this is my first zoning meeting, which is kind of surprising, but I'm not really quite sure about what the process is, but obviously, I'm not supportive of the development, I don't know, you know, what, what, how you vocalize that, how you go about, well, to voice against it, but there is a whole community on the street right there, and I'm sure my neighbor here, John, will say something in a moment, but anyways, I, I don't support it, and I said, but for reasons of traffic as well as the residential community.
Yes, sir. My name is John Makris, M-A-K-R-I-S, I live at 29, 299 Essex Road, so I have bought all of those properties. To echo some of, you know, the, my neighbor's sentiment, it is like a speedway in there, the trash and the litter outside our properties is disgusting, the more people come in and out of there, the worse it is, my son drives, goes to high school, he almost gets killed every morning trying to pull out of my driveway, I think further developing is providing the opportunity for more industry and commercial buildings is going to be a problem for the folks that live around. There, it, it is, like you mentioned, around that triangle area, the traffic around there, it's bad enough as it is now, and adding in bigger, slow-moving vehicles is going to be worse, I mean, I've had all the mattresses that people have dumped in my property over there, it's not right having, you know, that sort of trash in, in the area, i-in the further industrialization of it, the animals and a lot of that go from my property, they go back from the river, right through my property, across through, through all those areas as well, and we start, you know, pulling all that away, that's going to take away a lot of the charm that is the town, and the reason why my family and others moved here is to be in a, a small town, not in, in industry-wide zone.
Yes, sir.
I mean, let's be honest, don't want to. The thing is, it's commercial now, it's already commercial, whether what I'm trying to put up, somebody else can already put up, so your fast food, housing, all that, the trash, the speeding, it's got nothing to do with what's going to end up coming down the line anyways, you know, this is moving commercial, just to a different kind of commercial, and bringing a lot more non-conforming, conforming.
How do we find out with the broader plans?
I'm just buying, I lived in town 35 years, I drive that same intersection, I get it, I understand, even I said, oh, it's going to be problematic, come around that corner and stuff, but the thing is, is I'm just trying to buy one property to just contractor space, nothing crazy, everything's nice and neat, I'm not trying to throw affordable housing like half these other guys, which right now, they can go anywhere as they want over there if they wanted to, you know, so you still have all those B2, B2, so taking B2 to B3 helps, some of those properties are split, A1, B3, split right down the middle, but you're talking traffic, trash, just no matter what, someone can go put a cockle bell there, right, B2, if they want to, you know, so you're going to get more trash with fast food and that kind of stuff, instead of a guy who's developed a property, is going beyond the property, cleaning up the property nonstop and everything like that, and making it look better, too.
There's no guarantee, though, that all 16 properties in petitioned.
Well, B2's working.
Are, are going to be fully occupied, so to speak.
I know, I get it, I'm just saying what I'm trying to do, and I get it, I've been in town, I drive the same roads, I see what else is going on everywhere else, just, that's my two cents, so, I get it, you don't want to develop at all, but it's still zoned for B2, so someone can come in, who wants to do something that falls under B2, they can fight it tooth and nail, and they'll get it, so, whether you have someone that wants to do something nice with it and do it right, who's been in town and wants to make it look good, or have some housing come in and they can throw up some more affordable housing.
Want to buy all the properties?
And you can't put marijuana in B2 or B4, right? Or what's the story?
They don't have B4.
So the B4 retail cannabis has to have a previous approval, so there's no previous, it's not allowed in the B2, so no cannabis?
No cannabis either.
Retail cannabis.
Well, I, I just want to say that, I mean, the original sin was making it all B2, but it isn't, and this isn't improvement on B2, the, I agree, that, that I think as it's been expressed to me, now they could put a Pizza Hut, they won't be able to put a Pizza Hut, they'll be able to put a Luigi's, I think that it's something like that, Chris, in the sense that it's.
It, it depends on the property, so the B3 properties would be more like a Luigi's, so the B2 and the B4 now.
Then why change the properties to B4, um, Middlesex Turnpike, like what's, what's the benefit of that?
Let, let, let Chris finish and answer my question first.
So most of the uses in the B2 and the B4 are the same, so retail's allowed, restaurants are allowed in both of them, public utilities, stations, cleaning businesses, water reservoirs, hotels, motels, warehousing, and wholesale businesses, or contractor storage, that's the use that makes the difference with the B2 and the B4. The B4 setbacks are a little bit different than the B2, so in the B2 now, the setback from the street line is 25 feet, it goes to 50, rear and other lines are 10 feet, they go to 20, it's going to give the neighbors more separation from the B2, or the difference really is, is this contractor storages.
Go ahead.
And that's, I mean, I think those are every single, but it's kind of a quick summary.
Is it John?
Yeah, so what the, the section there, Middlesex Turnpike, isn't that going from B3 to B4, or is that going from B2 to B4?
Which section, sorry, there's a lot of sections.
Yeah. One second.
The southeast portion.
Southeast, every property that's being rezoned is B2 now, nothing's going from B3 to B4.
Because the southeast is the most portion of it.
Yeah, that's all B2 right now? That's all B2, here's, this is the existing zoning now, here, that's all, see, it's all B2 with the same point on the eastern side, is all B2, and now, those are, those, these are all property line-based zoning, so this is all just proposed to go to B4. On, on the west side is where you get some B3 sprinkled in, because there's more residential properties like Mr. Webb's house.
I hope that was B2, right?
Or B, or B4.
But the setback.
Right back to different.
No, it is doing.
East side.
Any other?
Yeah, I mean.
Questions or comments?
I'm not opposed, right, for individual people that want to, you know, develop a parcel of, 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 of the property, so, you know, I, I support that and understand that, I guess, you know, maybe it's, the simplicity is to group them all together with fear of a much larger developmental plan that's just not, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's just a bigger, right, and so, you know, being so close by, but, you know, as, as noted, it's already zoned, you know, that, and I don't, you know, I'm not a developer, I don't know the implications of B2, B3, B4, it's all allows for commercial development, you know, I think combining them into, to one, if it's really for, for, you know, harmonization ordinance, that, you know, somewhat makes sense to my, to my mind, but the fear from a resident nearby is that there's a bigger plan underway, and, you know, and so the, the thought of what can you do about that, or, you know.
Yeah.
So, so the one thing I think many of you don't know is the applicant came in to change his one property, and the zoning had a preliminary discussion, and you can't just change one property, it's called SPOTZ, so the applicant went out door to door, knocking on doors, talking to the property owners to go through to switch, to make these changes, so I don't think it was any intent, there's no master shopping center plan that's coming in. And, and so it started out, and then he came back into the office, and he's like, I've talked to the property owners, they're on board, which in, in some ways, that's kind of amazing, because it's hard to get 16 people or property owners on board, so there's no master plan that I'm aware of, attorney, so there's no master plan, this is just one property, or potential property owner who went out to buy one property for a use, and then in the process, in some ways, it's going to make properties more conforming in the B3, so for example, the Webb properties and the other property next door, if they want to put an addition on their house because they're in a commercial zone, they have to go for variances, if they want to put an overhang over their door, they have to go for a variance, the other uses, like La Moraya, those uses are allowed in those districts. So there's a master plan that started with one potential contract purchaser who came in, and the other thing, that you're right, there's the Cranberry Pond, there's wetlands, no matter what comes in, if it's B2, B4, whatever the zone is, those wetlands regulations are going to limit, and in some case prohibit, so it doesn't really matter what district it is, wetlands rules are going to apply.
Yes, I merely know that the applicant did call me and did speak to me, and in no way, shape, or form did I say I am on board.
I, I may have misunderstood, I thought everyone was on board, I was surprised, as I said, it's hard to get 16 property owners, for the most part, to agree.
Just a, a comment to some of the questions and concerns is that any potential property or any owner who wants to develop a piece of property, regardless of where it is located in town, has to submit an application to various departments, including zoning, and they have to go through that process before they get to a zoning application, I sit on Inland Wetlands as a zoning representative, Laura sat on Inland Wetlands, and the, the town protects those burlong pools. And the, the town protects those vernal pools and other wetlands, and, and controls development. Any development that would come in, in front of a, a, the zoning commission as an application, there are different regulations that hold. Uh, responsibility to each type of application, and to each type of development that has to be met or not met. So, um, we don't point in anything on the zoning department, we, we, we react to an application. Um, and as Chris has said, and Attorney Casella has said, uh, there's no master plan that's in anybody's head. Uh, regarding those properties, it, for the purposes that the CEO officer had mentioned. Relative to what was good for that area, um, uh, ended up being on the screen that we, we saw. They acknowledged the traffic, the litter that happens in that area, but that can happen here regardless of we approved or denied this application. It's gonna continue to be, or if any of those properties were developed, that, that's gonna be. Um, you had mentioned in twenty-six years, you hadn't come to the zoning meeting before, you know, welcome, but. That's why we need you to come. It's important to this commission that we have people like yourselves to show up. And voice their, their opinions and their concerns, so that we take into regard your considerations. Through the regulations, to do what is right for the town and the town folks, okay?
Is not any other?
I gotta just add one thing, that I'm sitting here looking at this whole, we're talking, and the. Section thirty-two, B thirty-two is shopping center bus, business district, and it's, it was designed. For shopping centers, that's what you zone now. So going to B four. It's quite a bit different from the standpoint that it's much more restrictive to any, any, any construction to go, you can go in there. So that's why.
Setbacks particularly.
Setbacks.
Setbacks are doubled.
Of what they are now.
So, just.
I, I have one last thing, um. Why have a meeting like this then, if it's already been zoned for shopping centers and so on? I mean, just to hear our feedback, negative feedback, pros and cons, um, it just seems. I, I don't understand why you have a meeting this, because it sounds like it will eventually be developed, and, um. You know, it may not, but changing the zoning, I mean, doesn't hurt to leave alone either. Except for this gentleman's parcel that he wants to purchase, so that's all I had to say, so. And, and will there be a vote on this tonight, or how does it work?
Um, if you. And you'll, you'll hear the next.
Okay.
Steps, okay? I'm just gonna say that I think this is, the current zoning doesn't make sense, and that this does make sense. And I just wanted to say that. All right, thank you. Um, Commissioners, since this is a public hearing, um, we can, uh, uh, make a. Anyone online? Wanna speak in for or against the application? Raise your hand, please, if you do. No, I guess not. That we can either, uh, continue. The application to our next regularly scheduled meeting, or we can close public hearing, uh, tonight, but there has to be a motion to do either. Is there a commissioner wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by John Henry, I'm sorry.
Just a question before you go on to the next matter, is there any specific information you need to get gathered? If you're continuing the hearing?
I'm just not ready to vote, because I still don't feel that I, you know, I mean. I don't feel that I have enough information to make a decision.
So that, that's, I guess, what I'm asking, what information is missing that you would need to make a vote? So we can directly advocate and something from me.
Specific.
Is there more information you can imagine, uh, we need in order to make a decision?
I don't, I don't know, I'm just not comfortable. Making a decision tonight, because I just don't, I mean, I feel that there's more that I need to understand about the parcels. I mean, it's unfortunate that there's one. It's unfortunate that there's one parcel that the gentleman wants to develop, but. He can't just change that zone, he has to, you know, it has to be all or nothing.
So, that's the way the application is, is written for this evening's review.
And that was the advice of the commission.
Yeah, so, I'm just not ready to make a decision, so.
So you, you wanna maintain your, your motion?
I do, yeah.
All right, and there's a, there's a.
Second. A second.
Um, any other discussion relative to, to the public hearing? Anybody wants to comment? No? All right, and we'll move to a vote, what we'll do is, is I'll ask each person to, to, so we have clarity. Uh, identify their vote, and I'll go by person, okay, starting with Laura. Uh, for, uh, approved to, uh, continue?
Laura Gray, and I approve to continue the discussion.
Bob?
Uh, I don't think there's any additional information required in order for the commission to make a decision. So I would say we do not need to continue.
Okay, Jerry is continuing?
I'm continuing, yes.
John?
You're continuing.
Okay, I, I also agree with Bob, because I feel that we have all the necessary information to close public hearing. But the vote, as I see right now, is three to two, to continue, we're gonna need to give to the applicant a clear definition. Of what additional information is needed for our March seventeenth meeting, uh, so that they can. They have to pass the motion to continue. Right, right, that's right, well, we did. We continued, it was three, two, to continue.
Oh, that.
So three, three, four, continuing.
That was, that was a poll, I didn't think that was a.
No, that was.
The motion was on the floor.
The motion was on the floor, and that was, I, I did it by person, so that there was clarity in it, so it's a three, two, to continue.
All right, so.
The commission needs to give the applicant clarity about what additional information is required. Correct, so can we, Jerry, can you provide some guidance to the applicant? Laura?
I really can't.
John?
I can.
Okay.
Sixteen properties involved, am I right? Jerry Casella, there's been a lot of people here, I'm not sure, I don't have it in my head, a clear understanding of. Which of these people are property owners, but I'd like to know, is the sixteen property owners, I'd like to know if they're for or against this.
No, the, the, we need to provide the applicant what additional information. We need material-wise to be able to, at our next meeting, to be able to, uh. Review, discuss, and close public hearing.
So I can't ask for.
I'll, can we?
Sixteen properties that were proposed, are proposed to be changed.
So my understanding, I know that there's at least, probably at least seven properties, property owner.
In the audience.
In the audience.
Yeah, I thought they all.
I, was my understanding that everyone was on board, but I didn't understand Mr. Landry was not on board. However, that's why I was asking the question when the motion was made, what additional information do you need? Relating to the map change. For the applicant to provide, so that they can make a decision.
So it's fair for me to ask. Where all sixteen people stand?
My understanding, well, it's, and it's some of them are the same property owners, but I believe fifteen of them, I believe, I.
Well, they all aren't here, but there's about seven of them, right?
So what, what you're asking for is where, where each property owner is on the application relative to yes or, or no?
Can I speak?
Yes.
Okay, um, if, if it'll help, we can, we can go down the list, we provided, um, a list of all the sixteen properties. Um, so seven thirty-one Middlesex Turnpike is owned by Barbara Reardon, and she submitted a letter of approval. Okay, Monk, Monk Road and fifteen Monk Road, they own two properties, are the webs, Lucinda Webb. And, um, Bill Webb is here tonight. Seven fifteen Middlesex Turnpike is owned by Royal Home LLC, I don't believe anybody is here from Royal Home LLC. Uh, we talked to him, but I don't believe anybody's here. Seven eleven Middlesex Turnpike is also owned by Barbara Reardon, and, uh, she's, she's in, in approval. Uh, seven fifty-six, uh, Middlesex Turnpike is owned by seven fifty-six Associates, uh, which is Alan Hall, who's in, who's in the back. My understanding is, is he's in favor of the application, he can speak for himself?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, next is seven thirty-two Middlesex Turnpike, Aventura LLC, I don't believe anybody's here from Aventura LLC. Three seventeen Essex Road is owned by Irving Wong, I don't believe anybody's here from, Mr. Wong is here. Uh, three fifteen Essex Road is owned by, uh, VFW of the US Inc., I don't believe anybody from the VFW is here. Seven hundred Middlesex Turnpike and six eighty-eight Middlesex Turnpike are owned by Barbara Gaudio. Uh, Mrs. Gaudio's not here, I know we, we met with her, uh, to review these changes. Um, six eighty Middlesex Turnpike is owned by Landry, who was here today and spoke, um, and, and did not support it. And then, uh, the last, uh, three properties owned by Lab Realty and, and seven fifty-six Associates. Those are Alan Hall properties, and Mr. Hall is in support.
Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen?
And sixteen.
And sixteen.
Yeah.
Who was the guy that, that left?
Landry, he's, he's, he's number twelve.
So, so just to add to, um, I did speak with the Gaudios in depth. And they didn't have any objection, and I also spoke with Bob Bailey, I believe, his last name, from the VFW. Didn't have an objection.
By my count, that's eleven.
Yep.
Yeses.
Yeah.
And one. And three, three knows. No.
Three we don't know.
No, three we don't know.
Right, three we don't know.
So, no.
So we would have to get.
So we contacted all of these property owners to receive letters of the public hearing, and if I can ask the applicant. The applicant, it was my understanding, he knocked on everybody's door, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think the two, I think there's only two people we haven't heard from, Aventura and Wong.
I thought number one, Wong on the phone, they were taking really, too good care of. But, uh, Aventura is La Marra, I tried stopping there.
And that was, and then, I'm sorry, Royal Home is the third one, you're right, Royal Home is the third one. Uh, they own, um, seven fifteen, their property is, uh, uh, non-conforming residence right now, that's being rezoned from B two to B three. I think that's, the seven fifteen Middlesex Turnpike is your mother's old house, right? Yeah, so that's Mrs. Reardon's old house, that has the spring running through it.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
So.
I feel like clear now.
Tried to, tried to do our.
Yeah.
That's a good question, thank you.
What, what other additional information would be required of the applicant for our next meeting?
Wouldn't it be possible to get some of the wetlands information, because that's amended from our map, would that make a difference to see?
Make a difference, because wetlands, there's not an application on specific prop, property.
Cause it's a sweeping change.
It's a separate agency, wetlands, too.
I know.
Right, and it's, it does its thing, whether it's B two or B four, that doesn't.
Yeah, won't change. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I understand that.
Any, any, as you know, Laura, any development going into any property with wetlands, has to be cleared by wetlands first. Before it can proceed to zoning.
And then because it's a gateway business district, then, as you said, it was a little bit more stringent than what we have now with the B two. So that's good to hear.
Well, as, as we, as we sit here right now, we voted to continue, um, the, uh. Hearing to the next regularly scheduled meeting, you know, for answers to questions that. We don't know what they are.
Can I make a point of order? Is, is it, would the commission consider a motion to, or a reconsideration of the continued, continuance of the public hearing? So that it could be closed tonight, potentially voted on?
I'll reconsider if we can do that, I, we can, right?
We didn't have the motion to reconsider.
Yeah, reconsider.
Yeah, motion to reconsider. I mean.
Another motion.
You're good. So.
I think you make a motion.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll do it, it's, it's, um. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider, reconsider the application. Uh, to close public hearing, or to.
The motion, so you're making a motion to reconsider the previous motion?
Motion to reconsider.
To continue the public hearing.
Right.
As you found, no.
As we found, no additional material is needed.
Okay.
An effort? I think so. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, take a vote, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstains, passes five zero zero, so now we can take a vote to close the public hearing.
Right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it then.
All right, so a motion on the floor is to close the public hearing for re- to application to amend the old Sabre zoning map. Motion made by Jerry Lewis, seconded by John Henry, uh, is there any discussion? Not hearing any, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstains, passes five zero zero. Question to Commissioners at this point is, do we have enough information on hand to adequately, uh, deliberate and. And, uh, consider the motion?
Yeah.
I believe additional information that we might accept beyond the public hearing that will close would be through staff. Does staff have any additional information to provide?
No, that, that's why I, I was challenging to continue the public hearing, but typically you ask me for additional information from the applicant. So, so that's why I ask the question, so no additional information.
So the public understands is that, once we close the public hearing, there's no other opportunity for the public to speak. It's the commission, and it's the five seated met, uh, uh, commissioners, um, at this point, so. The, uh.
So, excuse me, it's closed, or we can't say anymore?
That is correct.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the application to amend the old Zoning Map. Go ahead, sorry. Make a motion to approve the application to amend the old Zoning Map. With regard to properties on the east and west side of Route one fifty-four, on the northerly side of Route nine. As described in the application materials. Is there a sec?
Second.
Seconded by Laura Gray. Is there any discussion, further discussion needed? Not hearing any, we'll go to a vote, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstains, passes five zero zero.
I, I was just wanting to say, and I know it's not for the minutes, but has any traffic statistics or studies been done? Because it will increase, and there will be people that are gonna get hurt.
So, so the one thing.
All right, we'll, uh, continue with our meeting, just so everyone knows that. We have to continue our meeting, so thank you.
You're right, no, you're right.
Moving on to B. Kia application for special assistance. The applicant has requested a continuance until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Moving on to committee representative and staff reports.
Sorry about that, that was just my, uh, my brother.
Okay. So, um, busy wrapping up one grant for for sure, that plan went through, we're working on kind of wrapping the end of that up. That plan was adopted, has been put to the website, we had public outreach last week, and a little bit happened to the Mac Grant, and the new grant, trying to get a consultant hired for that. Um, I did also apply to our department a housing grant, I sent you a request with Megan Jules to try to figure out why our accessory apartment mixed-use regulation really isn't working. Um, you're gonna be busy, your next meeting, you have a retail cannabis application, you have a twelve-unit affordable housing requirement, and you have Kia, which has been continued. Um, I suspect you're gonna continue to be busy, Max's place has started for an area with ARB. So I think we'll be into a busy time. Where's the cannabis? So this is the cannabis at five Custom Drive, that was a retail approval, and I don't want to get into it because, but it's a modification to the parking info. That'll be for your next meeting. Unless you have something for me, I think I'm outside.
No.
I have a question about, um, some of the presentations we've been to recently about, um, trees and conservation, and we know about climate change and things that we should do. How are we gonna go about doing it, though? Um, are we gonna have to change a lot of the zoning regulations?
Well-
So that we can-
We have regulations regarding landscaping, a minimum of twelve trees per acre, and a tree every forty feet along the front street line. And there's a percentage of each lot in, by district, that is required to have landscaping. The landscape islands, internal landscape islands and parking areas are required to have trees. They have to be a minimum of a hundred square feet, and they're supposed to have trees. If you want to fix zoning regs regarding trees, fix the areas where the trees push up the pavement. Either give us a list of trees to put in the interior parking lot landscaping that won't push up the pavement, or, um, or increase the, the landscape area so that the tree can't do that. But I don't think that we, um, I guess you're, what I hear is that you're looking for more zoning regulations to require more trees.
That, and also, um, more regulations to prevent additional impervious surfaces. Regulations to reduce the number of parking spots that are required.
Well, we have regulations regarding maximum lot coverage, maximum impervi- not the impervious coverage on the lot. And, um, years ago, before anybody, I don't know, when Bob Deon was chairman, were you under this commission? When we met in, um,
Oh.
In elementary, in the elementary school, in Mrs. Nemerski's classroom. The Economic Development Commission and the business community pushed for additional, for a reduction in the parking requirements many years ago. And I think we're heading into another round of that in the future, but what the commission did at that time was we reduced the number of required parking spaces based on gross floor area, but we increased the amount of landscaping requirement. And if a site is required to have twenty-five percent landscaping, you can find it. In the industrial district, Pye and Hogan had it's really hard to say there's any landscaping, as that first property, if you're going up in a mill road, you go under the railroad, and the first property on the right side, um, close against the railroad tracks. They supposedly have at least ten percent landscaping, but I can't find it, so that's, that's how bad it can be. Which sites do you have in mind should have more landscaping? Any?
Stop and Shop Parking Lot.
The Stop and Shop Parking Lot needs the regulations that were in place at the time. And since then, it has evolved, and it has parking, uh, the, the car return carols, which heat up parking spaces, and it demonstrates that all that parking may not have been necessary. And as today, retail is in a, a decline. We don't, we should not require that many parking spaces ever again, but based on gross floor area. So it's up to the property owner then to express that they would like to have more landscaping and fewer parking spaces, and that would then set us off on reducing, uh, parking requirements in, in the largest development areas. There's a movement of what to redo, to eliminate parking requirements, and leave it up to the property owner to determine how much parking they need for what their uses are. But I have a problem with that because we know that use is on a property change over time, and that if there's not enough parking spaces for the new use, where are people gonna park? And they can't park on the street in many other urban, urbanized areas, they're on street parking. We don't have any of that. Route ones, Route one fifty-four, yes, we have it on Main Street. Do we want more of that? Is the state gonna allow more of that? I don't think so. So we're not gonna get more landscaping without accommodation for something else, especially with regard to parking.
Well, you have all that extra space um, in the Stop and Shop Parking Lot. What if the owner of that property decided or came in to put other stores on that lot?
They could do, they could, yes, they could do it.
That would be nice.
Well, yeah, it would depend if it was a minor or major modification. A major modification would trip everything.
So, so as you've seen, this property is redeveloped. That's when the additional landscaping and the newer standards come in. So when you have
Right.
a shopping plaza or a shopping center that's just been the same way since nineteen seventy, and I'm not picking on the Sabre Shopping Center, we have many places on Route one, and people say, well, nothing happens. We can't force them to upgrade to the new zoning regulations every time we adopt them.
Right.
But to, to Bob's point, have you seen the new tree planting guide?
Yeah, that came out there.
The new, the tree planting guide? May have some ideas for commission members as far as, as well as applicants, as to what to plant in landscaping islands and parking lots. And just to go to Laura's comment too, we do a lot of things, and I know we had recently sea level rise, resiliency, we've got a lot of projects going on, but we do incorporate a lot of that already into our regulations. So you go through some of the sections, we have rain gardens, we have our town engineer goes through and looks at the stormwater, it's to the highest stormwater, um, regulations, you know, that we have right now in the state, they're all up to date, up to the stormwater quality manual for housing FEMA, I mean, we have our flood ordinance, we require beyond the minimums two feet higher, so there's a lot of things in place. I think we're just at a point right now with resiliency, planning kind of at a height, and the most recent plan, and I know we were at the, um, the old Sabre sea level rise.
The Wednesday night.
Committee that, uh, so they've been going out, they're a nonprofit educating about sea level rise, so it's something, as you look at your regulations, we've incorporated a lot of that in there, it's applying it and thinking about it, but some of the things are beyond zoning, it's what do you do in the road floods, you know, those are, how do you keep the, the bridge so it's not underwater? So there, there's a lot of things, but I think what Bob was getting at before is our landscaping regulations, if we have drainage, soil erosion, sedimentation control, that'll kind of goes to, we're not gonna stop sea level rise. But we have great regulations for trees. One of the things is, and I know that the Tree Committee and Save Our Shade have been going out, they're trying to get private property owners in, in residential and commercial areas to plant the trees. We can't require people to plant trees, but that's why they were having those giveaways to
Yeah.
start helping to, to have more trees and encourage more tree canopy. But in addition to that, for example, in the gateway zone, our gateway regulations go through and they regulate tree cutting, tree trimming, tree clearing, our fifty-foot wetlands buffers, and so there's a lot in there. It just, it doesn't kind of, it's sprinkled through everything we do, it's just not a list of yeah, one chapter, it's not in one chapter.
Okay, that makes me feel better. Um, and then one other question, uh, because this comes from me listening to some of the planning meetings. Um, as, as a zoning commission, we can't really make a decision onto the types of businesses that come into these properties, but we could say maybe that's not the best use for that property?
We already have done that by listing the uses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In each, in each
So-
category, it lists what can be, what's special, considered.
So when, when somebody comes in and people, uh, are worried about the wildlife and, and um, do we make some trade-offs? Do we say to the developer, okay, if you're gonna take down a hundred trees like they just did, um, where the back center's gonna be, do we ask them to put up a hundred trees somewhere else in exchange?
We, we don't have that
Yeah.
authority.
We don't have that. That was something Carolyn was asking me about.
Yeah, no, Carolyn, we talk quite a bit.
Yeah, good.
She's going through, I've given her some suggestions, she's talked to me about
Okay.
certain commercial areas, so I, I do
Okay.
talk to her pretty frequently, and she does reach out with questions.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I should turn.
I wanna make sure that we commend Chris Costa with regard to her, um, fighting the good fight as zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
And that the town in general should appreciate more the work that she does as CEO and town planner, and her collaboration with the various commissions, including inland wetlands and planning and zoning.
And ARB and conservation and historic districts, and aquifer protection, and I'm sure I forgot somebody, thank you though.
And also thank you for always being available if we have questions, and welcome, welcome us to come in and talk to you about this.
The more you learn, the better commission, and the better commission that I work with, it's
Makes you like, well-
It's everyone's easy, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.